Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, united now, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silent prayer for our servicemen and women throughout the world and also for all of those who have passed away in our community, especially Corporal James Abdis Senior, retired member of the Scranton Police Department.
Mr. Perry.
Here.
Mr. Donahue.
Here.
Mr. Evans.
Here.
Mr. Gahan.
Here.
Mr. Rogan.
Here.
Please dispense with the reading of the minutes.
Third order, 3A, Single Tax Office City Funds Distributed Comparison Report 2017-2018, year-to-date, March 31, 2018.
Are there any comments? If not, received and filed.
3B, Tax Assessors Results Report for Hearing Date Held, March 28, 2018.
Are there any comments? If not, received and filed. Do any council members have announcements at this time? I have a couple. We have invited members of Riley Engineering to attend a caucus to discuss vehicle and pedestrian traffic regarding the proposed Sheets project at Mount Pleasant Drive. The caucus will be held next Monday, April 16th, at 5:15 PM. The resolution to approve these items will be tabled until at least after the caucus is held. Just a reminder that City Hall will close tomorrow, April 10th, at 2:00 PM. Active shooter training will be conducted for all employees. City Hall will reopen Wednesday morning at 8:00 AM.
Fourth order, citizens' participation.
Our first speaker tonight is Les Spindler.
Good evening, Council. Les Spindler, city resident, homeowner, taxpayer. You know, this rental registration is a joke. I came here last year and complained, and I'm going to complain again. I live in my rental unit, I'm exempt, and I keep getting letters from LIPS, and this is harassment. They know I live there, they're sending me the notice to my address. How stupid could they be? You know, I threw it in the garbage. If I get another one next year, I'm going to return it with a nasty note, they're not going to like it. I mean, you people pass legislation, and you don't even know how it's going to be enforced. They don't know what they're doing up there. And I said this last year, and here we go again. It's ridiculous.
You're right that you are exempt, and I don't understand why LIPS would send out a second. Obviously, the first time around, you send a note back that its owner occupied and you're exempt. Why you're getting notices continually? Really, it's a waste of money. It's a waste of postage.
Absolutely.
So, we could discuss that with Pat Hinton, to see why they're still going out after people have applied for exemptions.
I appreciate it. Next thing, let's talk about Sheets. Councilman Rogan, last week you were very negative about that. I mean, it's a business coming into the city. I don't think it's going to add that much traffic. People are going to say, "Oh, I go in the Sheets, I have to get gas." Most people are going by there, they'll stop there if they want to. I don't think it's going to add that much more traffic. And your comment that it might be back to the Glider Diner, I think you're being ridiculous. I don't think... It's a business coming into the city, it'll bring lots of money into the city. You want to save $5,000 to silence our voices here, and you're against a business that'll bring a lot of money into the city. Moving on. Councilman Perry, you weren't here last time I was here. That one week, you said, "You'll make a deal if I stop talking about pit bulls, you'll look into the nonprofits."
I hope you accept...
Well, I never spoke to you about pit bulls.
Will you...
I spoke to council as a whole.
Sure. And, you know, I remember after you spoke about them, you know, I was just... It's something I'm against, just, you know, singling out one burrito dog.
Well, I'm not... I just wanted dangerous dog legislation.
Right.
And since you people are too darn lazy to go about doing anything, take it into my own hands. Thanks to Dave Dobson, I went and bought pepper spray. That'll be my dangerous dog legislation. And if I injure a dog doing it, it's on you people up there, you won't do anything. Councilman Evans, did you go speak to the mayor about it?
I haven't seen the mayor since we talked.
That was about two weeks ago, you haven't seen the mayor?
I haven't seen the mayor.
Well, I think you should make it a point to go see the mayor.
I'd never avoid the mayor.
Okay, it's not often I agree with Councilman Gahn, but I do agree with him, what he said last week about the street sweeper schedule. I think there should be a schedule out so people do know when a sweeper's coming, so they can move their cars. I think that's a good idea. So, I think council should look into that, try to get a schedule, put it in the newspaper or whatever. And, just one thing, a little letter to the editor a few weeks ago, I thought it was pretty Perhaps it would have been less damaging to his political career if President Trump had been introduced to Jack Daniels instead of Stormy Daniels. Thought that's pretty funny. And thanks to Ron Elman for using his glasses. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Spindler. Ron Elman?
She doesn't know I have 15 minutes, did you tell her?
Just five, Ron.
Okay. I don't know how many times I've stood here and declared what a great city we have with the best of people, but now and then, there's always a... There could be a rotten apple in the barrel. Last Wednesday, about 1:00, Rose told me she hears an animal whining. This went on, on and off, to 8:00 the next morning, we kept hearing, I don't know what it was, cat or whatever, all night. I finally, I phoned Animal Control. Lady came out, and she discovered a trap at a house, one of the houses near me. This is despicable. It takes a subcreaton to sit a trap out there for animals, especially in a neighborhood where there's pets and... It's just not done this day and time in the city. This isn't Alaska, for crying out loud, where people have to trap for food. And she said she couldn't find anything against it. This needs to be terminated immediately. Never heard of having traps in the city for animals. And if anyone put out a trap, it should be someone from Animal Control, not some deranged, just some piece of filth trapping animals because they don't like them. There's no reason... How many times has anyone up there, anybody anywhere, passed a telephone pole and seen a sign where somebody has lost a beloved pet? Even large rewards are given to get them back. Pets become part of your family. Here is some depraved person allowed to leave them in a cage for 20 hours in the freezing cold Wednesday night, no food or water, and I don't know what happened. It just stopped at 8:00 in the morning, I didn't hear it no longer. But somebody that does something like that doesn't belong in society. I think the worst of hunters wouldn't want to see an animal in pain. As much as I don't like pit bulls, I wouldn't want to see a pit bull in a cage for 20 hours in cold weather freezing. I implore this council to do something and look into this. There got to be some city code. This is an injustice this day and time. Like I said, people don't trap animals for hunting anymore, especially in town. I don't know, going back years, Roseanne used to trap some cats, and she spent her own money, I think she spent like $40, $50, having them neutered or whatever it is, and returned to the neighborhood. One of them lived around the house till a couple weeks ago it died. It was like, I guess we'd had it eight or 10 years hanging on. I don't know where it went all the time, but it'd come back. Like I said, people's... Pets are like animals. Whatever they are, you can have a lizard, a snake, a canary. They're like... It's like part of my family. In fact, the one that died, Roseanne had it cremated. But to have this filth in the neighborhood, in my neighborhood, catching animals... Like I said, everybody's passed a telephone pole and seen where somebody has lost one. This shouldn't be allowed this day and time in our society. People like this don't even belong in society. For this man or woman, whoever it was, rotting in hell is too good for somebody that would trap an animal and leave them like that for 20 hours. Please, somebody find out what the city code is and put an end to this. Thank you.
Question, to council, when and why did council relax the specifications for utility digs and pave cuts? The reason I'm asking this is, back in November, the utility company made a pave cut in the 1600 block of Wyoming Avenue, close to the house, I'm well aware of it. This pave cut has been backfilled four different times, and today, there must be at least a four-inch divot in that cut. Now, this is crazy. If the utility companies can't backfill and compact this stuff, then they should be changed. On another note, well, gentlemen, we're going to start a third year. We're still in the same place we were three years ago with this situation as far as Meadowbrook Creek. The only difference is, right now, is we have spent between the Kennedys and ourselves over $20,000 for legal fees. Nothing has been done. Nothing. Now, over three months ago, Mr. Evans, Mr. Gahn, Chris Kennedy, my wife and myself, met with the Riley Engineering Company to try and rectify some major differences that showed up in their original study. It was agreed between the city and our combined efforts that a new revision would be done and followed by the city, and then an RFP would be placed in the paper to request contractors. Since then, apparently, there's been some changes made upstream. I don't care what they do upstream. I want my yard, and I want the Kennedy's yard fixed, and I think it's about time. We really don't care, like I said, we don't care what happens upstream, but an RFP is not even in the wind. Riley Firm has been holding things back. There's been a lack of response from the city to get this company to give us the revision. I talked to Riley's over three weeks ago. They said, "We can't connect the dot from point A to point B because we can't get down in the hole." I told the guys to come out with two men and lift the plate. They were going to bring a backhoe in. I said, "Just lift the plate." I've done it myself. Lift the plate, look down in the hole, and find out where point B is. Since then, again, nothing has been done. And I'd like to know who has and why the brakes have been put on this thing. This program is, you know, again, we're here starting three years. Since our attorney passed away, we do have a new attorney on hand. She spoke to Jessica today, and apparently, there's been nothing in the wind at this point. I'd like to say something here. The hole naturally is getting bigger every time it rains or snows. All the plates and wood paneling is in the hole. If we get a good, hard rainstorm, and I get water in the basement because somebody's put the brakes on this thing, there will be hell to pay, believe me. And it won't be a little bit. And I think all five gentlemen sitting at the dais here should contact council members, the council should contact the solicitors, and get after the engineers, Riley, to find out why they have not brought this new revision to fruition. It's crazy. Something is wrong here. And I'm sorry, I just can't believe that after three years, that something can't be done except spending a hell of a lot of money. And I know both, three of you have done everything you can so far. Mr. Rogan and Mr. Perry, I know Mr. Perry has written by the house and pointed to the house with his wife. He made mention to my wife, "Oh, there's the house that has the hole in the ground." Take two minutes and stop and see the hole.
Hi, kids. Les, I didn't know we had a street sweeper service in the city. And Mr. Young, it must be the three-year anniversary night going on tonight. About three years for me, too. Nothing's been done. Most of yous know, my house burned down in October, and I'm pretty busy rebuilding a house. So, you know, it's been a while since I've been here, but you know what? I'm still in the fight. Since most of you guys won't do anything about it, the flooding problem in Kaiser Valley, you know, me and the neighbors, some other people are doing what we have to do to keep after this. And the latest thing, I'm hoping that somebody can give me an answer. The biggest thing we're working on right now is to try to get maps of the drainage system in the neighborhood. One of the neighbors, and believe me, all the neighbors are behind me, so many of them, but they don't have the time to come here. Neither do I, but I guess I have to make the time. So, I come when I can. But one of the neighbors wrote a letter to the city of Scranton, to the... I'm not sure the proper department, though, to try to get maps of the water drainage system. I believe that was about eight weeks ago, and nobody wants to help. So, can you tell me what we need to do to get maps of the drainage system, the water, you know what I mean, the drains? I don't know the technical name for it. What do we have to do to get those maps?
Mrs. Reed, I would assume that Mr. King would have them, the city planner, so I'll reach out to him tomorrow and see if we can get a copy for you.
Yeah. As far as I know, when we had a meeting, one of the meetings we had, I'm sorry, I can't even remember who it was, they brought us the map from 1938, and we're going by that. Isn't that crazy? You know, it's like you keep getting blown off. It's like being proven that you keep getting blown off. Can somebody see this, that this is crazy? You know, now we can't even get maps, you know? We've followed all the things you guys suggested in the past, you know, to have meetings, caucuses, get information from different people. We've gone through everything we were told to do, and it's just brick walls all the time for just about three years now I've been fighting this. So, okay, Mr. Gahan, what's the next step? How will I know? Will I know in a certain amount of time, or do I have to wait eight weeks again to come in and say, "We can't get the maps? Why can't we get the maps?"
Well, I have your phone number, so when I get, if I get the map from Mr. King, which I'm sure I will, if it's available, I will call you, and I'll give it to you, give you a copy of it.
Okay. Got any idea how long that'll be?
Until I talk to Mr. King, I don't know, but I will let you know as we go along, but I would assume that it won't take that long if it's...
Can you ask Mr. King then? Bill, I appreciate everything you're doing. You know, maybe a lot of people don't like you, but you're... Seems like you're the only guy that's doing something, you know? Mr. Perry, thank you. In the past, you came out, you looked around, appreciate that, but nothing was ever done again, you know? Okay, that's it. I just want to let you know, I'm back, you know? Thank you.
Thank you. Roger Shaw?
I am a business owner on Seventh Avenue. Since 2004, I run Sunoco Gas Station, which is right next to the car wash. It's owned by Darrells. The gas station is there for, since 1995, I believe, so that road is not as busy, and we do pretty good business in the neighborhood, but my main concern is, if the Sheets will come in a block down the road, it will wipe out at least 40% of my business. It has happened in the history of my ownership, that when Turkill came in across the school, at that time, it took 35% of my business. So, what we'd do, it would basically, we only have so much of gasoline customers in the city. And if you put one more gasoline station, what we will do, it will basically take from here, here, here. Bottom line is, what does the city is going to get if they will come in, in the city? What does, we, business owners, don't pay taxes to survive? And if there's more competition come in, bottom line, taxes still, they're going to be the same because the customer's safe. We cannot do it ourselves. I'm only a single owner. I have reached out several neighborhood people and the business owners to help and stand up to prevent a loss of business and get wiped out and go out of business. It has happened in several cities within Wokesburg, Scranton, Dunmore, and with my experience, at least few people within a block or two who owns a gas station, they go completely out of business. We could use some help, can't do it without our, you know, city people or all this, I guess, neighborhood to support. So, I'm here to give my few inputs. If it works, I would greatly appreciate it.
Thank you. And as I mentioned at the beginning, we are having a caucus in council chambers next Monday at 5:15 PM regarding... Now, this will just be specific to the traffic issues associated with the project, but we definitely invite you to attend as well, and then we'll have a regular meeting after that caucus.
When you brought up the traffic, as it is during school hours, the traffic backs up behind my gas station, all the way past the car wash on Seventh Avenue, as it is. So, you know, maybe it could be also a concern that, you know, everybody from West Side passing through my gas station, they will be having a lot more tough time to go through the bottleneck. You know how it is. So, that could be a concern. One last thing, should I bring it out to your attention, is I own this gas station since 2004. There is a neighboring yard, an empty lot, between me and a banana, a zorish. It has never been taken care of it. I have complained several times to the city officials, that please help me out, so that way, at least when people come through the notch, I mean, the bottleneck, they could see I have a gas station. But by the time they realize it, they're already past my gas station because the, you know, the shrub is so high, there's trees growing over there in that yard. And I'm also a big-time tax payer in the city of Scranton. My yearly tax is about $100,000, not one or two. I own 32-plus properties in the city of Scranton, and I'm a fair, I'm all current with all my bills. So, what I want to do is, I want to live, let others live, so please help me, and all I could say is pray the Lord that we all could survive in this world.
Thank you, and we will send a memo to the proper department about that overgrown, and I know exactly, I drive that way to work every day, and I do, you see me at your gas station from time to time also, so we will make sure we get that addressed.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Joan Hodawanitz?
Joan Hodawanitz, city resident and taxpayer. I've been coming here for now a little over four years, since I stopped working, and I, like many speakers, will come here asking pointed questions, and I tend to be very critical of some of the decisions made by the administration or even a council makes. And there's nothing wrong with that, because I think all the citizens have a civic responsibility to hold public officials accountable for their actions in an attempt to make sure that government services constantly approve and the citizens are properly cared for. But the problem with that is, sometimes you tend to lose sight of the big picture, and because we hear a lot of problems, and they're all legitimate, I don't trivialize the problems that the speakers bring up. Many of them are heartbreaking, but sometimes we forget that there are good things happening in the city every day. There are 76,000 people that live here, and I'm as guilty as anyone else. I tend to, you know, "I only have five minutes, and I'll be back next week," you know? We all do that. But yesterday, because I live downtown, I've lived downtown now for 19 years, I was watching the half marathon, and I was impressed the way the police were handling traffic, and the runners were having a good time. I didn't see any problems, at least in the downtown area. The runners seemed to be very pleased with the half marathon. DPW came in and did their thing afterwards, and, you know, by early afternoon, you didn't know there was a marathon, you know? It was done and over with. And we tend not to acknowledge the good that people do, whether they be public employees or whether it be an org... Well, I will tout the library, but there's a lot of good being done. My mother passed away last summer, and people started asking me why I still live in the city. And to tell you the truth, I don't want to live anywhere else. I like it here, okay? I mean, I've lived outside the country for 12 and a half years when I was in the Army, and I've seen a lot of people and a lot of cultures, and you aren't going to find any better people than right here in Scranton, Pennsylvania. You aren't. You're not. You aren't, okay? There are good people here. There are some bad dudes, but there are also some very good people here. Back in ninety-seven, I knew I wanted to come back here and this is where I want to die, and I bought my burial crypt at Cathedral Cemetery twenty-one years ago. That's where I'm going to be for eternity. So I'm not going anywhere. Uh, I like my church, I like volunteering at the cathedral, I eat every day at Abe's. If anybody wants to find me, that's where I'll be for breakfast, 'cause cooking's against my religion, but don't tell the bishop. Um, I love being at the library, you know, yet, did you bring your kids to bug day yesterday?
No.
Oh darn. We brought in harmless little bugs and they were playing with them, they're alive and they're keep crawling all over their hands. They had a great time. Um, but I, I think, you know, I mean, next week I'll come back and I'll ask some critical questions and pointed questions and I'll snivel and I'll complain like nothing good is going on, but sometimes you just gotta step back and recognize, you know, that we do have, we have great students that, that accomplish great things. We have, like I said, policemen and firemen who risk their lives every day for us and get virtually no credit. Um, you know, I don't know. Sometimes we just have to look at the big picture and yes, the city has major problems, but it also has some wonderful people. Speaking of people, why haven't you introduced this young lady to us? Mr. Rogan?
We, we certainly will when, uh, when the time's right.
Okay. So next week I'll be back with my complaints and I'll snivel. Thank you.
Thank you.
Joan, thank you for your comments tonight.
Is there anyone else who would like to address council?
My name is Nadine Sims. I was here last Monday and making a little, mild complaint about a certain situation and I just want to thank City Council for taking care of the situation, PDQ. I drove, I complained about the congestion on Ash Street near the Boys and Girls Club, dangerous situation, the kids getting out of cars and being picked up. And I drove by the place on Wednesday and the signs are up, so I just want to thank City Council for that, that you do get some things done contrary to most statements that things don't get done, but my situation was a minor thing that was easily taken care of. Um, I have a question for City Council. Do any of you have any idea when we're gonna have our streets repaired in the Hill section?
I don't-
Specifically, 900 Block of Prescott, 800 Block of Prescott, Myrtle Street, Gibson Street, Pine Street, all those streets is terrible.
I don't think the-
Like a war zone.
Yeah. I don't think the schedule came out yet. Mrs. Reed, do we get a street sweeping schedule yet?
No, not sweeping.
Or, oh, repair?
Well, that should be happening soon yet. Well, utilities are done, they should be done by now, so the next phase would be the curb-to-curb paving, so I would expect that to happen within the next thirty days, but we can, we can ask, uh, Mr. Azori, our Pavcon Inspector, what the schedule is and he could check what the utilities-
I got a telephone call about a month ago and said that they would be putting, hooking our house up to the water, main water supply soon.
Oh, they haven't done that yet?
And then before then, that we would get another call.
All right, so when the laterals are done, yeah.
They, they are digging up, putting in pipes, but they keep, seem like they're doing the same thing over and over again.
Yeah, it seems that way.
They've been there a year, a year.
I know.
So take, just out of curiosity, take a drive and see what it's like.
I've, I've been there many times.
It's bad. It's bad. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who would like to address council?
Good evening, Council. Dave Dobson, resident. Uh, on that sheets issue, I also thought of that. Uh, you have a gas station right across from the high school and a few blocks down the street, you have on Seventh Avenue a gas station. And, uh, you know, it's kind of, how many do you need? So it's something to keep in mind. Once again, trash. Recycling cans are for recycling and we should have some kind of enforcement of it. I see many houses. I haven't walked my dog through the courts because of, uh, my gift on my birthday last year, April 11th. Woke up with a broken ankle for no good reason. Uh, maybe my wife knows something about it. You won't trace anything with the dress now, will you? No, I'm just kidding. Uh, it was a health condition. Uh, but, uh, it's, uh, it's really ridiculous how many recycling cans just get used and recycling is obviously not being enforced. And, uh, our trash people that remove it would be the best people to do it. And I had a little thing popped into my head with this rental registration. Do we have to really, uh, register every year if we have a tenant for three, four, five, six years or whatever? Maybe we could, uh, spread that a little out for people that have long-term tenants. Now, once again, I wasn't talking last week about any type of gun control law. I'm back on that again. It's a school protection law where, uh, legal, uh, pepper spray could be used to possibly abort a shooting. And, uh, the thing is that it's non-lethal, it could stop a problem, you might have some losses, but you wouldn't have twenty-seven and you wouldn't have seventeen and you wouldn't have a, a lot of the carnage that you have now. Keeping in mind that two-thirds of all the people that commit serious crimes have no reason to deny them purchase of a firearm. And, uh, two-thirds are suicides, so, uh, that's kind of a democratic thing. It's kind of hard to stop somebody. But the point being that I don't want to, I'd like to see schools hardened and that's all I'm asking for, is a letter to your representative. And out there in TV land, if you agree, please do the same or give them a call and say, gee, you know, maybe we should have some type of non-lethal spray. Wouldn't have kids, uh, kids being, uh, killed needlessly. And furthermore, when it gets to teen paranoia, I mean, I had plenty of it when I was in Scranton. I was jumped in front of Bill's Sporting Goods up there on Providence, six guys. Next week they're in Green Ridge Lanes after us. My father had to pick us up 'cause there's no way that, no matter who you are, you're gonna beat six guys. And there was a whole pile of them in the bathroom after me, in the men's room. And, uh, beer bottles thrown at me, people swerving cars at me and different things. And, uh, so in other words, and I became a one-man army after a while. Because after a while, when word got around who I was in four or five years, I could sit with my shot and my beer and the whole bar was on the floor, fighting. Those are what they taught me, thanks to them. But the point being, um, you know, a few years ago, we had a smoking thing going on with, uh, a young man came in and, "Oh, I'm gonna be a football player and I want to do this and I want to do that and smoking's harmful." And in reality, a lot of SUVs on the road deny you one percent of your breathing capacity every year till you're twenty-one. And, uh, the point being that sometimes, most times kids turn out good and sometimes they just make a bad mistake and, uh, they get too much credence if they're, uh, shrill. Um, and furthermore, one quick thing, no plea bargain for shooters or terrorists. They should sit through a courtroom and face up to what they've done.
Thank you, Mr. Dobson.
The disgust indeed that they did. Thank you and have a good night.
You too.
Like Mr. Holmes out there, he plea bargained and got his life sentence and nobody heard very much more in Aurora, Colorado.
Thank you.
First I would like to ask about paving. I, of course, read the legal notices every day and I keep seeing all these municipalities in our area putting out RFQs for their paving programs. And I just am concerned that we're gonna be at the bottom of the bucket again and where we were a couple of years ago, where it's too expensive to proceed because everybody else has been, has, has all the people tied up. So when do, could we expect that the city, the streets that are to be paved this year will be available and the RFP will be issued?
We could check on that. Um, I did speak with the mayor about the paving two or three weeks ago, so it should be any day. And actually, John Poses was in our caucus today. He mentioned, um, about the, the paving project going out soon, so I, we could check on that for you. It should be very soon, though.
I, I think we should have time to, to review that. The other thing I, I heard spoken of tonight was street sweeping and I, uh, again, would like to state that all that stuff that does not get swept up now is gonna go down our drains and we're gonna pay, uh, when we, if, if we ever get a stormwater management system in the city. So, uh, back before you all decided to sell the water comp-, uh, the Sewer Authority, there would have been a, a truck up there at least twice already getting that grit up from the road. And normally I go out and I sweep up my own as do most of my neighbors, but, uh, because of some breathing issues, I'm not gonna be doing that this year and I think it would behoove us. How many, how many vacuum trucks do we have?
We have two, right?
I think we have two. I've never seen them at the same time though, so it's hard to tell.
Pardon?
We have two, but I've never seen them both at the same time, so maybe that's, maybe we only have one. I, I've only seen one out at one, at any, any given time.
Okay, well, I, I would certainly think the, the mountain areas that have had the most grit really need to be done and they need to be done sooner rather than later or you're gonna pay through the nose. And then on to stormwater, the Arcadia Study. Is the sole purpose of that to set the fee for the rainwater?
No, I don't think so. I think it's, it's broader than that. I think it's, it's to decide what course of action to take as well. If it's gonna be a stormwater authority, if it's gonna be a regional authority, you know, what that's gonna look like.
Well, you know that the, the SAPA had a great deal to say about stormwater.
Yes.
And, uh, one of the things they did have to say that we were supposed to do, um, was to engage a consultant to conduct hydrological and hydraulic assessment of the West Mountain Kaiser Valley area and to seek funding for an improved urban stormwater management system. When can we expect that to happen?
Talk to SAPA.
Pardon?
I'm not sure. I, I wasn't aware of that part of it.
Well, I, I think-
I know we just got, the grant was just approved on another subject, on the, on the zoning revisions, so we should be seeing something that, on that very soon.
Um, yeah. What about, um, E O Z status? It's been several months since the mayor wrote his letter. Have we heard anything?
We haven't heard anything.
Okay. Moving on to a few of the, uh, items, I don't understand in 5B why after there's been all kinds of complaints about the condemnation proposal and where I was, "I'll wait till after rental registration, wait till after rental registration," and now we are adopting something that's been in existence since 2012? Why didn't we just do that before?
This is actually updating the previous, um, International Property Maintenance Code, which was even prior to 2012. This actually brings us more up to date than we were.
And that's what I'm saying, and why now? Twenty-twelve is six years ago. Uh, why does it take us so long? And then 5C, uh, is this Bob Gatton's, the same one who is the chair of the zoning board?
It is.
Um, you know, I, it's, it's up to the mayor to appoint who he wants and obviously that's what he's gonna do, but I think it's really pretty sad that he's got to pick one person for two different, uh-
Well, City Council appoints zoning.
Pardon?
City Council appoints zoning? So his appointment to zoning was from City Council?
But it's still, it's still the same person in two. I would think out of seventy-six thousand people, there might be some other people who might want to, uh, to participate. Uh, good Lord willing, I'll be back next week. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address council?
Fifth order, 5A motions.
Mr. Perry, do you have any motions or comments?
Yeah, just very quickly, uh, we did mention that Mr. Poses was in our, our caucus today and I want to thank him for taking the time and debriefing us, a lot of, uh, joint efforts between Scranton and, uh, issues regarding several bridges in the area that, uh, were project that will be starting soon. He also reminded me about another popular program, uh, that we have that actually I haven't really mentioned it in a while and that's, that's the Scranton Fire Department's Fire Prevention Program. Uh, they were in a very, very good program where anybody can give a phone call and I will give you the number. You can get your name on a list, the fire department will come out and install fire, uh, fire alarms in your homes on your different floors and also add a CO2 detector. Uh, they'll put those out as they have inventory and when inventory runs out, they'll go and order some new ones and then they'll pick up the list where they left off. So even if you, they don't get to you right away, your name's on the list and it's a, it's a very good program to have. Uh, it's very safe, effective, it's good for your family, uh, and it's also good for the fire department to come in and they, uh, you know, they can really, it really speeds up the efforts and, and it keeps people as safe as possible. The phone number, if you're interested in that, is 570-348-4132. And give them a call and get your name on the list to, uh, take, take part of this great program. Uh, you know, it's, 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 it could be lifesaving as anybody, uh, knows who had a fire and, and has lost some things and hopefully never loved one. Uh, that's all I have as far as motions and comments and I'll save the rest of my, uh, comments for, uh, the agenda items. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Perry. Mr. Donahue, do you have any motions or comments?
Um, yes. First off, I'd like to, uh, make a motion to, uh, table item 7B in order to, uh, obtain some more information from the administration.
Motion has been made. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
On the question?
Yes, on the question. Um, you know, I have several issues with this. I'm gonna vote against tabling. Uh, I had questions last Monday and we just got an answer to my question. We were just handed the letter at the end of our caucus, so very difficult to have time to even review it, which I, number one, I find unacceptable. Um, I asked for the funding sources, what was grant-funded, what was budgeted. I assumed that I was being specific there, but we got a very, uh, nonspecific answer from the city solicitor. It's my belief that, uh, RFQ should be evaluated with a scoring percentage for each, uh, requested requirement. And I think that's the most fair process for making an award. I don't see that in this RFQ. Um, in the fee schedule for Peters Design, it has a stated, uh, stated and negotiated price for construction monitoring. So in my opinion, that would be a separate price and a separate percentage of the engineering and construction contract and final cost of the project. So my fear is that the sky could be the limit here. I mean, you know, Peters Design could really name their price at the end and we would be, uh, at their mercy. Um, my concern is if we vote to give this contract, uh, to Peters Design at this point, another bidder could make the argument that the process was unfair 'cause the RFQ did not request a negotiated fee for construction monitoring. So it's possible that the other bidders included that fee in their base bid. I also have concerns, uh, in the RFQ, you'll notice, bidders were not allowed to see a proposed budget or at least an estimate. Um, they also were not allowed to tour the entire facility, including the inside of the building. And this is highly unusual in my opinion. And I also believe that there is an issue with the disclosure portion, uh, of the contract. I'm not sure that, uh, that was filled out right as well. So, um, usually I would vote to table this, but we've had a week, we asked the questions, we asked if the city solicitor come to the caucus. If this was that important to the administration, they would have sent an official to come and answer our questions. Uh, again, this was discussed last week, so I don't really understand what the holdup is. So I'll be voting no on tabling and when this does come for a final vote, I will be voting no. Thank you.
I have, uh, the same concerns as Mr. Gahan and we've talked about them over the last week. And I'm, would really just like to table just to give the administration the ability to answer our questions, but from my perspective, as it's written right now, I would, I would not be- to answer our questions. But from my perspective, as it's written right now, I would not be voting against it unless I'm satisfied with the administration's response.
Yes, on the question, I think we talked about this one in fifth order as well. There's a lot of issues here that do need to get answered. As Councilman Gahn said, we did get a letter just as our meeting was going to start. And, you know, I agree. I think that we need some answers to some of these serious questions. I'm not at the point where I'm ready to vote no on this legislation because I think it's important, and a no vote, and if we do not approve this legislation, then the process starts all over again. So I'm willing to find that middle ground, and let's table this, let's get our information we need, and let's make the most educated decision we could based on all the information once we receive it.
Just to add one thing. I did bring these concerns up last week. We did ask a member of the administration to come, whether it was a city solicitor or the acting business administrator, whoever, and nobody showed up. So, you know, if, again, if it's that important to the administration, then send someone to answer our questions. And then we get hand-delivered this letter, you know, five minutes before we come out on the floor for a final vote on this thing. So I just find the process, again, unacceptable, and I don't think the administration is showing this legislative body the respect it deserves when it wants us to vote on legislation. Thank you.
I agree with Councilman Donahue's motion to table it. I think, you know, we gave really a six-day notice to try to get somebody here. We had -- we did receive a reply from questions that were sent from the administration. There are some more questions, so I think that the right move is to table it, try to get that information, and then give it an up or down vote. I know that Councilman Gahn has been against this project from the beginning, so I understand his objections. On the other hand, I've been for this project from the beginning. We have to make sure we get this right, get the proper information, and then give it an up or down vote.
I agree. On the question, I think it's prudent and a sound move to table it and stop the clock, give us another week to get the information that we want, and then bring it back for a vote. So I'll be voting yes for the tabling.
And to mention, it may be two weeks because we do have a caucus that will probably be lengthy next week regarding the traffic study for Sheets at 5:15, so it may not be until the following week until we could get that scheduled. Anyone else on the question? All in favor of the motion to table signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
The ayes have it, and the item is tabled.
On another note, I am hopeful that the school board will pass the resolution this evening approving a shared services committee with the city that council approved a few weeks ago. I've also gotten a couple of questions about when the city will be sending out the garbage bills. So Mrs. Reed, would you be able to send a letter to the treasurer's office inquiring about when the garbage bills will be going out? And I would also like to briefly respond to the majority commissioner's ridiculous letter to the editor that appeared in the Times Tribune last week. First off, the majority commissioner's, and I quote, "commitment to the 214,000 residents of Lackawanna County," end quote. If their true commitment was to all residents of Lackawanna County, they would actually put the time, the time in to research all the facts surrounding reassessment. If they actually do that, they would find out that their concerns about causing, and I quote, "undue financial burden on residents" or "to see anybody lose their homes," end quote, then they would actually find out that any undue financial burden on property owners can actually be avoided by developing a sound policy to go along with reassessment. But actually putting the work in is a lot harder than getting your picture taken. Secondly, this has nothing to do with city finances, as they allege. This is about having a fair and equitable tax structure that would actually spur economic development instead of the current structure, which is detrimental to economic development. Also, I find it quite ironic that Commissioner O'Malley actually brought up the issue of transparency in the letter. If Mr. O'Malley was truly interested in transparency, maybe he should consider telling the public what he knew about sex abuse claims at the Lackawanna County prison, both from his time as a guard and his time as a Lackawanna County Commissioner. Or maybe he should consider letting the public know about his time as a school director when Dan Sandsky was hired as district fleet manager and started receiving benefits even though he wasn't a district employee. And also, how Mr. Sandsky miraculously was hired by Colts after being let go by the district. If he was truly concerned about transparency, I suggest he start there. Lastly, council has already authorized the mayor to file suit on this issue, and since it's obvious the majority commissioners are only interested in political grandstanding and not finding common ground, the question I have for the mayor is, what are you waiting for? Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Evans, any motions or comments?
A couple of brief comments, and since the subject was brought up, I guess I'll go there. Our door is always open for future meetings to discuss reassessment. However, I agree with Councilman President Rogan when he said that if there's going to be another meeting, it should be held here in council chambers, where hopefully any more attempts to misdirect or delay the discussion can be avoided, and we can have a real conversation about reassessment. We can do it in a work session, and all five councilmen can participate, as there were three commissioners at the previous meeting. But before there could be any meeting scheduled, I would expect the question that I posed at the last meeting to be answered. Under what circumstances, if any, would you be willing to do a reassessment? And we haven't gotten an answer yet. So if they could provide that answer prior to the meeting, we'd finally have a framework from which we could build on. If not, I'll be honest, I'm not really sure what another meeting will actually do or what benefit there would be from another meeting. Also, on the Sheets issue, as was mentioned before, we have a caucus scheduled for next week with Riley Associates to discuss the traffic light situation or legislation for the Sheets proposal. Our focus and responsibilities are fairly narrow and pertain to the legislation before us. Tabling the legislation to get some more information on the traffic signalization and traffic study, as well as make sure pedestrian safety is ensured, is a fairly routine matter and should be viewed as nothing more than that. It is not a review of the total project or the impact Sheets may or may not have on other businesses in the area. And finally, last week, we discussed briefly C-Click-Fix. This is simply an idea that we are exploring. Whenever we have an opportunity to increase productivity and efficiency in City Hall, as well as engage more citizens, we should discuss and review that opportunity. After the demonstration of the product, city council will weigh the benefits versus the cost and determine if it's something we really will ask the administration to move forward on. So a PowerPoint presentation is planned for May 7th in the governor's room at 5:15 as part of our public caucus to explore this issue a little bit more. That's all I have.
Thank you. Councilman Gahn, any motions or comments?
Yes. First, Mrs. Reed, if we could get from the administration possibly an update on the situation at Mr. Young's property with the hole that he's been dealing with for the past three years, I'd like an update on that. Also, as I mentioned to Mr. Cerebro, we'll try to get a map of the neighborhood for him from our city planner, if that's the correct course to go through Mr. King. So we'll try to get that for him. I mentioned this last year. There's a damaged fence at the intersection of Third Avenue and Luzerne Street. The six-foot chain link fence runs along Third Avenue above the bank of the Lackawanna Heritage Valley Trail. There's a large section that is really badly damaged, and there's nothing at this point to stop a child or a dog from going over the bank and getting seriously injured. So I did ask that a letter be sent after Mrs. Reed did some research on it, July 20th of last year, to the SRA, Scranton Redevelopment Authority. They own that small portion of the land. They did contact the L H V about purchasing that land. So Mrs. Reed, I'd ask just for an update on that. The -- I keep getting concerns, and rightfully so, from the neighbors there, but they're not concerned about who owns it. They're concerned about getting it fixed so someone doesn't get hurt, especially now with the new fields there that the University of Scranton put in. There's increased foot traffic, and with the trail there, there's people from the neighborhood that go up that way. So I would hate to see something tragic happen. So if we could ask for an update on that. Secondly, it was announced this morning that Henry Amoroso signed on for another year as Mayor Courtwright's financial advisor. The contract is through the Scranton Chamber of Commerce, and the salary for Mr. Amoroso is apparently being funded by Geisinger, allied in Lackawanna College. So Mrs. Reed, I would like to request a copy of that contract from the chamber because I'd like to know what exactly Mr. Amoroso will be doing, what his deliverables are over the next year. He is getting paid $60,000. I'd also like to ask the mayor for an update on when he will hire a new business administrator or if he is planning on hiring a new business administrator. Neighbors in the Green Ridge area asked for an update on the Lace Works project, so we're still waiting on that. Spoken to several neighbors this week, and they're curious and anxious to know what stage the project is at and where the developers are with that. Several residents reached out to me in the last week regarding the city's street sweeping, and it was brought up here tonight. I do believe that the schedule should be out soon because last year, they started the first week of May. Again, I'll mention this. Residents would like to be notified when the sweeper is coming through their neighborhood so that they can move their cars. So I urge the mayor again to have DPW somehow notify the residents, whether they put a flyer on the street poles or something to that effect so that people are aware. You know, not everybody watches the council meetings, and I know we announce them every week when the schedule does come out, but it would be helpful if people knew when exactly they were coming through their neighborhood. After receiving some conflicting information regarding the appointment of Mr. Cashano, the former business administrator, to the position of equal opportunity specialist and administrative assistant in OECD, the Office of Economic and Community Development, I did have additional questions which I posed to the administration over the past two weeks. Number one, what day-to-day housing and urban development activities are assigned to Mr. Cashano? Please be specific. In an email I received March 20th in response to my question regarding a job description for this position, the city administration stated that a portion of Mr. Cashano's work would be focused on Crowley Park, and my question was, has Crowley Park, has that project been funded at all by HUD? Also, in the email from March 20th, it was stated that Mr. Cashano would be the OECD liaison with Scranton tomorrow, and I asked how HUD funds have been provided for this coordination and liaison initiative. And I ask these questions, as I mentioned a few weeks ago, because I am concerned, as I stated recently, that the city may be in danger of losing federal funding if Mr. Cashano is doing work that is not related to projects that receive federal funds from HUD and outside the scope of the job descriptions of equal opportunity specialist and administrative assistant. And I was confused. There was some conflicting information. We were told at first that he would be the economic development specialist, and when I did question that, because that position is not a line item in the budget, then it was pointed out to me that he was actually hired as the equal opportunity specialist and administrative assistant at a salary of $43,000 where they were combining that position. So again, I just want to make sure that, you know, we don't turn around in a year when we get audited by HUD and have to pay any money back. So that was my concern there. And lastly, the, as was pointed out in the newspaper, the Scranton Composite Pension Board voted Wednesday to evenly split 90% of the $22.9 million in sewer sale proceeds between the fire and police funds, with the remaining 10% going to the non-uniform fund. The three funds are each categorized as severely distressed, which is defined as a funding ratio of less than 50%. The addition of $10.3 million in sewer proceeds to the police plan will increase its funding ratio to 59.9% and improve its rating to moderately distressed. The non-uniform fund, which will receive $2.3 million, also will improve to moderately distressed with a funding ratio of 56.6%. The fire fund will receive the same $10.3 million as the police fund. However, because its financial condition is much worse, the funding ratio will only increase to 38.2%, which still leaves it severely financially distressed. There was an analysis that was conducted by Randy Seacole, who is the plan's actuary, and he found the fire fund would need roughly $19.5 million or 85% of the sewer proceeds to bring its funding ratio to 49.2%, which would leave at that point just $1.9 million or 8.5% for the police fund and result in a funding ratio of 49.1%. Non-uniform fund would get $1.5 million or 6.5% and have a funding ratio of 49.2%. So if they went with that plan, all of the funds would be roughly around 50%. The board voted five to two, five in favor, two against, with one abstention to approve the allocation. I have posed this question to the administration because I still do not understand why the mayor's proxy, why the mayor voted to abstain from voting. What kind of leader abstains and then does not give a position on it for such an important vote? I mean, you're voting on spending $22.9 million in sewer sale proceeds, and the city abstains and then doesn't give a reason for abstaining. I was under the impression that if you abstain from a vote, it either has to be for a conflict of interest or you have to explain why you're abstaining. Just as if you voted yes, you would explain why you voted yes, or if you voted no, you would explain why. So again, I would like to ask the mayor, on what grounds did they abstain from voting on that important matter on the composite pension board? I also question the sense of the way that this vote went down, and I'll use this analogy, and maybe I'm wrong, but this is what I've been thinking over the last week since this went down. If you have two patients who come into a hospital, one's having a heart attack and the other one broke his thumb, do you give the same medical care to both? No. You pay more attention to the heart attack victim because it's urgent, and he needs to be taken care of. And I'm not sure that this vote that went down about equally spending the proceeds should have been about fairness, but maybe about the health of the overall pension funds. I question whether it would have made more sense to have similar funding levels to all three pension plans, and should we be more concerned about fairness or about the long-term viability of the funds? And also, it seemed as if, according to the email chains that I received, that the vote may have been rushed. The city had to pay for a study that looked at some of these other options, and it seemed to me that, you know, some members wanted to vote on this immediately. Now, in the background of all this, I do want to mention that I don't think we should have spent any of this money at this point until we're clear of what some may have forgotten about a pending lawsuit over the sale, the legality of the sale of the Scranton Sewer Authority. And I think we also have to remember that this is ratepayer money. And that's all I have this week. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gahn. Just one item. We did receive a letter, and I wasn't sure whether I was going to read this or not. As Councilman Evans mentioned, our scope regarding the Sheets project is pretty limited, and it's strictly to the traffic issues. This letter does go into some other items, but I do want to read it because it is from our state representative. So this letter came to council, I think it was late last week, from State Representative Marty Flynn, and I do want to read the letter. It says, "While I have always been an extreme proponent of any new business moving or expanding into our region, particularly when it's in my legislative district, I write you today very concerned about the recent announcement of proposed opening of a large Sheets gas, beer, and restaurant facility. The proposed 46-seat restaurant, alcohol, and tobacco distributor, and Ten Bay Gas Station will have a very serious negative effect on dozens of local businesses, including restaurants, delis, convenience stores, small supermarkets, and locally-owned gas stations such as Peewee's and Moleskies that have been paying taxes, employing people, and supporting other local businesses. I won't even go into the concerns about beer and likely wine store that will be promoted next to a high school. Additionally, there is a horrible traffic congestion and safety problem every day of the week along Seventh Avenue and Providence Road. Again, while I'm fighting every day to bring new businesses to help our existing businesses to grow, the thought of bringing a mega-gas station/restaurant/beer complex to our inner city in an already horribly congested area is almost beyond comprehension for me. I strongly urge you to reconsider this proposal in the interest of our community, our businesses, and the safety and well-being of our residents and visitors. Respectfully, Marty Flynn, 113th Legislative District." So I did just want to read that into the record.
And that is all.
5B for introduction and ordinance, adopting the 2012 edition of the International Property Maintenance Code, regulating and governing the conditions and maintenance of all property, buildings, and structures by providing the standards for supplied utilities and facilities and other physical things and conditions essential to ensure that structures are safe, sanitary, and fit for occupation and use, the condemnation of buildings and structures unfit for human occupancy and use, and the demolition of such existing structures in the city of Scranton, providing for the issuance of permits and collections of fees therefore, repealing Section 1 of Ordinance Number 37-2014 of the city of Scranton and all other ordinances and parts of ordinances in conflict therewith.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that item 5B be introduced into its proper committee.
Second.
Second. On the question, all those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and so move.
5C for introduction, a resolution, appointment of Robert Gattens Jr., 528 Orchard Streets, Scranton, Pennsylvania, 18505, as a member of the Scranton Municipal Recreation Authority. Mr. Gattens will be replacing Jude McCandrew, whose term expired December 31, 2017. Mr. Gattens will be appointed to a five-year term effective February 21, 2018, and will expire February 15, 2023.
At this time, we'll entertain a motion that item 5C be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second. On the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and so move.
5D for introduction, a resolution authorizing the Director of Public Works to act as agent for the city of Scranton for emergency and disaster relief pursuant to the Robert T. Stafford Disaster Relief and Emergency Assistance Act, and authorizing city officials to execute the designation of agent and the PMA, Public Disaster Assistance Application, and agreement for financial assistance.
At this time, we'll entertain a motion that item 5D be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second. On the question, all those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and so move.
Sixth order, 6A, reading by title, file of the council Number 11, 2018, an ordinance establishing a no parking zone along the west side of Wyoming Avenue from a .170 feet south of the intersection with East Gibson Street to a .325 feet south of the intersection with East Gibson Street to allow for driveway sight distance purposes, as shown on the attached highway occupancy permit for the Pennsylvania Northeast Regional Railroad Authority.
You've heard reading by title of item 6A. What is your pleasure?
I'm the item 6A. Ask for reading by title.
Second. On the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? The ayes have it, and so move.
Seventh order, 7A, for consideration by the committee on finance for adoption, file of the council Number 10, 2018, creating and establishing special city account number as noted entitled, Arley, North Main, and Parker, for the receipt of grant funds from the Automated Red Light Transportation Enhancement Grant Program in order to provide funding for traffic signal at the intersection of North Main Avenue and Parker Street.
What is the recommendation for the Chair for the Committee on Finance?
As Chairperson for the Committee on Finance, I recommend the final passage of item 7A.
Second. On the question, roll call, please.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Gahan?
Yes.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes. I hereby declare item 7A legally and lawfully adopted. Item 7B has been tabled, so if there's no further business, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Meeting adjourned.